Class A average is better than class B. That means some of the people, 10% better this year.
Okay. Greetings, everyone. Welcome to the regular monthly meeting of the Woodfin Town Council. Today is Tuesday, September 15th. We are glad you're here. Everybody has technical issues once in a while and we have the masters who fixed it. First item is approval of the agenda. Has everyone had a chance to look at it and are there any changes required? If not, a motion to approve it?
So moved.
So moved.
So move in a second. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Thank you very well. Next is the consent agenda as usual. I hope everybody read it. I did. The amount of detail is good and reading minutes also reminds us of things. So any comments or questions on the consent agenda or is there a motion to approve it?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much. We now are going to do my very favorite part of every meeting, which is public comment. Public's invited to attend the meeting and to speak for a limit of three minutes. We do ask if you speak to come to the podium. You're being videoed so that people are watching and for the record, they will know who you are and where you live. First is Mr. Wilson Sims. Welcome.
Hey. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Town Council and staff. Wilson Sims, 303 Ava Lane, Woodfin. Like each of you, I love the greenways. And I've been active encouraging the greenways since 2010. Gary and I had a lot of conversations back in those days with Mark Hunt and a lot of other good folks has worked working on that. Now almost 10 years from the bond referendum and eight years since the signing of the agreement with Buncombe County to construct our two greenways. Here are the nine questions, the nine questions I continue to pose. I believe each of you have a copy of those. Yeah. Well, first is about the new agreement. I think Shannon's mentioned to us that there's, there isn't defined expectations and deliverables. And we'd just like to, maybe it needs to be a new agreement drafted at some point. And love to see the priority for that put in place and maybe, you know, a date on the calendar for getting that done. I think that was mentioned when I came a year ago to give the last presentation. Are post-Holene costs with the updated Greenway guidelines identified? There'll be some new, there'll be new costs, I'm sure. You know, they, have they been added in and is the schedule adjusted? That's question number two. Question number three, what happened to the 2016 bond referendum money in the accounting to voters? How much to Woodfin wave to the parks and to the greenways? Love to hear what happened there. Next question four, what are the full budgets for each greenway? We've got two greenways, Beaver Dam and the French Broad. Has anyone seen a full budget of the greenways? How much money has come and where has it gone? What was the beginning cost for Buncombe County in 2017? What is it now and projected? I saw a new projection out goes up to 2029, suddenly jumped a couple of years. So what's the new budget? And after eight years, for me personally, it's been very little transparency. Is it wise to consider an audit at this point, just as a professional consideration to consider an audit at this point? I think that might be professionally wise at this point.
Three minutes goes by in a hurry, sir.
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't realize that right there. Okay. And the next is have the yearly objectives been stated? You know, what's the yearly goals for 2025 and where are we? The Taylor Wave model seems to be working great and can the greenways structure a similar? A similar structure would be, with citizen involvement would be fabulous. I've heard rumblings that the Buncombe Beaver Dam Greenway is not moving forward as planned. I don't know if y'all have heard anything about that. The next, you know, is it possible that Allison might be invited? Allison Gaines and her team might be invited to present to the Woodfin citizens and Town Council.
Wilson, we appreciate your input very much.
Yeah, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Eleanor, welcome. Ms. Eleanor Floyd?
Promise I won't be here every time, but I have a couple of questions.
Can be, but remember the three minutes.
Okay. I gave each of you a copy of the first page of this. It is about fire safety and we need to look at that for safety's sake. There, it's all available, all of this and a lot more on the website, but I wanted to get you introduced to it. There are some real concerns about safety, how wide the roads are, how close they can get. There was a fire on Wind Whisper and they couldn't get up the driveway to get to the fire in the backyard. And so there are lots of things that you need to look at. And the other thing I wanted to mention, on May the 26th, the Planning and Zoning Board or Board of Adjustment, whatever you want to call it. If you will look on YouTube, you will be able to see that whole meeting and all of the concerns that were presented. How many of you have seen that?
Watched it live.
Well, in that, I go back to the 7,000 cars. I don't see it in my mind, but if that were to happen, that would, there would be no way we could all get out of that one entrance and exit to 26 or to Merriman. So please think about that, the safety of all of us. And the last thing I wanted to mention, you know, we set up rules and regulations. This board has, when I was on the Planning and Zoning Board, we did. We need to really examine those. If we made them, there was a reason and let's try to keep them. All these conditional uses and like slope, like widths of roads, all those kinds of things. They let our community and our citizens down if we don't maintain those. You can't just let somebody come in and do whatever they want. And I know that they would have to come back to you for conditional uses, but please think about it. And if you'll look those things up, if you have anything you want to ask me, anything you want me to find out, let me know and I'll do my best to get it. And my phone number is 828-230-7779. And leave me a message if you need to because it's been busy lately.
Thanks for going to the trouble of doing all of this. We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Floyd, Eleanor, you timed it perfectly. You must have rehearsed that.
No, I didn't.
All right. And there, I don't think there's anybody else here that wants to speak that didn't sign up. Thank you very much. Presentations and reports, Town Manager Shannon Tuck.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. So I began every report with an update or a summary of where we are in our recovery process. And I think as we approach the one-year anniversary of Hurricane Holene, there have been a lot more questions about where we are in the recovery process. So I'm going to spend a little extra time on this first slide, just kind of explaining a little bit about how the FEMA reimbursement process works and how this applies to Woodfin. So first of all, is debris. We have six different public assistance applications with FEMA, the largest of which is debris. And interestingly, despite being the largest, it's the most straightforward. There are three categories of debris. Road, which was completed some time ago. Waterways, which is very nearly completed. It was completed, but our contractors identified a little bit more debris, applied for an extension. I just found out yesterday that that extension was approved and now they're just waiting for ingress, egress to kind of hop in there, get it and come back out. So that waterway work will be wrapped up very soon and that will be it. PPDR is the largest, well, I wouldn't say it's the largest, but it's probably the most complex of the three categories. And it is taking a little bit longer. We have two rounds of applications. The first is the largest. We had about 75 applications in round one. That work is nearing completion. They saved the Sunny Ridge properties for last because they were the most heavily covered in debris and the most steep and the most difficult to work on. And we recognize that in round two, as we wrap that work up, we recognize in round two that there are some additional Sunny Ridge applications. So we're going to complete round one on Sunny Ridge and we're going to start round two on Sunny Ridge. So FEMA is trying to expedite those applications so that the contractors can stay mobilized where they are and just sort of kind of seamlessly continue that work. Once Sunny Ridge is done, they will move on to all of the other properties and it should be completed this fall. Yes, ma'am?
Of the 75, how many of those were denied?
About a quarter of them. And so, so the state asked FEMA to reassess all of those applications individually. So before that FEMA only looked at a sample and based on that sample, they said, yes, looks good, proceed. So I think there was some misunderstanding about what kind of debris would be eligible. So a lot of people submitted applications that included debris that FEMA later determined to not be eligible. So about a quarter were denied. There's probably another, I would say 25 to 35% that were eligible, but eligible with conditions. And a lot of those conditions were, some of the material was eligible for removal and some of the material that was included in the application was not. So it's kind of a mixed bag. So of those 75 applications that were eligible with conditions or eligible, they're concluding their work. We are still awaiting the final disposition from FEMA about the status of those other 44 applications. We're trying to accelerate the few that are on Sunny Ridge so that work can continue, but then we expect the rest of those to come along shortly.
Can you speak to what types of situations were denied or not eligible?
So the FEMA, the FEMA guidance that was issued at the beginning of the disaster was that any material that was on quote unquote maintained property or on, in unmaintained property, but posing a threat to property. So if it was in your yard, next to your driveway, in a landscaped area and it was damaged or fallen, that was eligible. That's in a maintained area, that was eligible. The biggest question has to do with the trees that are in the unmaintained areas and whether or not they pose a threat. So a lot of our properties are on steep slopes and what is a threat became sort of a question. And this was never denied, defined. So maintained area was never defined, threat was never defined. So if it's on a slope and it could roll downhill into a road, is that a threat? Well, if it's on a slope, but there are 20 trees between that tree and the road, is that a threat? So it's questions like that, that nobody really knew how to answer. And so out of an abundance of caution, the debris monitoring group that accepted those applications just told everybody to include everything. So people included all of this material thinking it would be removed and then later learned that FEMA was not removing the material that they didn't deem a threat.
Do you know of any properties where someone's arguing that it is within maintained area? Like any ones are being denied that maybe shouldn't be denied? Has anyone come to you complaining about that?
We had one application in particular and our contractor went out to look at it specifically. And with some concern that perhaps it should have been, it should not have been denied, but after he reviewed it, he said, no, that is consistent with FEMA's review of these applications.
Shannon, as I learned through my own claim and part of being denied by FEMA, it makes those, but it also has to block your access, ingress or egress to your residence or a street. There are even more rules if you go down the list that I wish I had known going in.
It has to be leaning and it has to be leaning more than 30 degrees. It has to be leaning over a driveway, a house, a deck, a play structure. You know, there are, there, and then from some of the other, so what is, what constitutes a threat has been a big question mark. And we're getting more clarity around that now, but it still remains somewhat uncertain. Maintained area was another one. What constitutes maintained area? If you don't have lawn and you maintain this portion of your woods and you've got a bench to sit there and hang out or a fire pit in the woods, is that a maintained area? Even though you've got trees and leaf litter all around, that's a question. Now, it does seem like they are accepting those kinds of improvements as a quote unquote maintained area. But that's another potential area of confusion. Okay. Yes, ma'am?
Can you speak to any plans for reforestation or revegetation, whichever one you want to, whichever term you want to use?
So FEMA is only responsible for the removal. That's all they're accepting any responsible for, any responsibility for. The state is well aware of the concern about wildfire risk with all of the additional debris that's on the ground that, you know, FEMA wouldn't deem eligible for removal. On top of the loss of the tree canopy and what that also means for our area from an erosion control, erosion control standpoint and landslides. The state is exploring, this is what I've been told, the state is exploring, they're aware of the concern, they're aware of the hazard and they're exploring whether or not there could be some funding for that in the future. Meanwhile, our local nonprofits are also trying to kind of get some action moving on that front and are propagating trees and other plants for replanting, but no large scale plans yet.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Have you heard, does that include Eco Foresters? That's a local nonprofit.
Not, no. I mean, most of the information I have gotten was from Ashwell Grain Works, who does some of their own plant propagation and also accepts donations from other areas and actually puts plants in the ground. So I know they're looking at it.
I'm looking to get somebody out to Sunny Ridge to give me an opinion on what the work has been so far. Because so far it looks like clear coating and getting calls from people in Baird Cove that live in the county. They're not constituents, but they're my neighbors. So I'd like to get some, some idea of what to tell them.
Yeah, I'm sorry. That's all the information I have.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
So moving off of debris, I think when most people think about FEMA recovery projects, they think about the repairs to infrastructure and facilities. So for Woodfin, that's roads, our stormwater system, those are our two infrastructure pieces. And then restoration of our two riverfront parks, Silverline Park and Riverside Park. Roads and culverts, I reported last month, the engineering study that, or the cost and timeframe for the engineering work for those projects was quite high and quite long. And so it gave us some pause. I've spent the last month reaching out to colleagues in our neighboring municipalities to kind of check in to see what they're seeing in terms of engineering costs. And the good and unfortunate news is that we're not alone, that these costs do seem to be somewhat consistent with what everybody else is experiencing. Additionally, the timeframe is somewhat consistent. We did, just out of an abundance of caution, also asked our FEMA project manager to look at the scope of services for engineering services. He identified a couple that he wasn't sure if FEMA would cover, but for the most part, he didn't seem alarmed at the scope of services or the costs associated with that. He was actually more concerned about the timeline. And what I learned from my colleagues is that what, and we have a meeting, I should say, we have a meeting this week with both the engineering group and our FEMA project managers to discuss all of this in more detail. But what we're expecting to hear is part of the reason for that 10, 10 to 12 month timeframe is because we have a number of stormwater culverts that are going to require environmental permits. And so that's a permit with the Army Corps of Engineers and that those permits sometimes have a turnaround time of six to nine months, depending on the complexity of the permit. So that's a big chunk of that 12-month timeframe. So that is what we're expecting the engineers to tell us when we ask them about this. We also have a number of culverts that are going to require what's called an H and H study. It's a hydraulic and hydrologic study and that is a more involved engineering process. So with all of that, it looks like that's probably pretty consistent in what we can expect, but we are going to try to iron that out for sure this week. Silverline Park, we are moving forward. We should be getting those revised plans this month. I reported last month that we are updating those plans to include some modest stream bank mitigation. So the, and FEMA has sort of conceptually approved that. So we're having our consultants update the plans to include that mitigation. The restoration that FEMA will approve is to restore your facility to the pre-storm condition. But they also recognize that in some cases, it's kind of silly not to try to make it a little bit better. So there is a modest allowance to add mitigation. In most cases, it's 15%. There's a few cases where you can get more, but you can add on about 15% of your cost to do some additional enhancements.
Is that like a tow wall or something along?
Tow wall is more significant than 15%. So that's, that's, that's a unique, that's actually kind of a unique animal. But Silverline Park, roads and culverts or stormwater, those are pretty straightforward FEMA restoration projects. So you had a facility pre-storm, the storm comes, there's damage, everybody inventories and identifies that damage and agrees upon the damage. You get a cost for the work to restore it. You move forward with the cost and FEMA reimburses you for that cost. Sounds simple on the surface. It's really, when you get into the nitty gritty of it, it gets pretty complicated. But if you use those three projects as an example, we do pretty well until we get to the cost. There are two avenues of determining the cost for a project as it relates to these public assistance projects. The first is to accept FEMA's cost estimate. So as you document the damages, FEMA staff review that and they use what's called Standards and Means, which is this giant volume book that is published every year and has tables and charts and graphs and things that identifies what the, sort of the average cost for different construction related materials and labor and equipment and all of that. So they use that. But I don't know if it's because Standards and Means is maybe not the best resource or if it hasn't been updated lately or whether or not work, cost of work in Western North Carolina is that much more expensive. I suspect it's a little bit of both, that our cost, what we expect the cost to be is significantly higher than what FEMA's estimated costs are. So we don't really want to go with the FEMA cost estimate, even though that is by far the path of least resistance. That is so much easier than what we're trying to do, which is document what we think the costs really are. And you, and depending on the work, that documentation can look differently. It can be an invoice or a contract for work or just a basic cost estimate, all the way up to a construction bid and anywhere in between. But what we're finding is that the FEMA officials will accept some documentation, not all documentation. If it's not, depending on the work, if it's not stamped and sealed, if it is, it may not break down the different costs in the way that they want it broken down. So you have to go back to the contractor and ask them to break down the cost. Anyway, there's a lot of back and forth and that's the detail that becomes confusing. There is also discrepancy. We may look at a cost and include a line item that FEMA didn't include. And we, we say, hey, your cost could be higher if you just included this. And I'll use the example of restoring the riverbank at Riverside Park. If we restore that to pre-storm conditions and we put an earthen bank back, you're going to have to use a cofferdam. Your cost estimate doesn't include a cofferdam. Can you please reevaluate that and add a cofferdam? Because if you do that, then the cost comes up and now our mitigation costs are satisfied. So there's a lot of that kind of back and forth that we're experiencing with FEMA. So that is a big part of the delay of us being able to move forward.
All your own Silverline, our restrooms, is that?
Yes.
For a long time?
No, restrooms, once we do the contract for work, which we hope will be able to do this fall, we're going to include restrooms. Now that'll be a separate portion of the contract, so it doesn't get commingled with the FEMA work, but we're going to.
Those funds have been approved.
Yes, those funds have been approved. They've been obligated, they're ready to go. So we're going to do restrooms when we do the rest of the renovation.
Can I ask how much risk is involved with us trying to have our estimate accepted by FEMA versus what they already deem is adequate for a repair? So I'm trying to weigh what the risk is because if we get nothing, because again, like I brought up last month, we don't know the direction of the government right now. And so what real, I mean, have you thought about the risk of some versus none?
Yes, yes, we certainly have.
Can you speak to the process on that?
Sure. So we have asked multiple parties, FEMA officials, state officials, others who have worked in recovery, what the potential for funding to go away could be, especially when we had that initial change in administration. Nobody seems concerned that funding would go away. So I think the risk for funding to just go away is very low. But the risk for performing work that later is not reimbursed by FEMA because they deem it ineligible is what we're trying to avoid. That's like where our focus has been. We're trying, and that's what's taking so long, is getting FEMA to agree to the costs before we move forward with work. So we don't want to, we could have gone ahead and done work and then tried to submit our actual, our actual costs. That is an option. But our concern was that they would look at those actual, actual costs and say, well, we're not paying you for this or that. So now we've spent money that we were expecting to be reimbursed for, that we didn't get reimbursed for. So we're doing our best to not leave money on the table, get as much funding, funding from the federal government to do an actual restoration. Not, we're not trying to get anything more than what we're not entitled to, but we are trying to get what we need to actually repair the work. Now, the one exception to that is Riverside Park and I was going to talk about that. Maybe let me cover that and if you still have a question, let me know. So Riverside Park is the one exception to this. And that is because the FEMA restoration process focuses on restoring the facility to the pre-storm condition. But we don't want to restore Riverside Park to pre-storm condition. We had a plan for a significant renovation and enhancement of that park before the storm came. Now FEMA works in literal, like apples to apples kind of context. So, but there is a path forward where we do what's called an alternate plan. Where as an example, we don't, we have, we're eligible for reimbursement for repairs to our pavilion or to restore the gazebo that got washed away. We don't want to restore the gazebo, we don't want to repair that pavilion. We want the money for that and then we want to use that money and apply it to the construction of the new community pavilion that was contemplated in our original master plan. So that's the alternate. We want to kind of take that eligible funding, but kind of shift it to a slightly different project. FEMA will let us do this. But we are running into the same problem with Riverside Park that we have with the other projects and that we don't think their estimated costs are valid. So FEMA's estimated cost to repair the restrooms and restore Riverside Park to pre-storm conditions is somewhere in the neighborhood of $70,000 some thousand. Our estimate is closer to $300,000. Now trying to line up our, now we have an actual contract. We have a construction bid that is, those are, those should be regarded as real construction numbers that should be considered. The problem is our bid includes so much more than what FEMA will even look at because it includes a lot of enhancement work that doesn't get applied to a pre, to a restoration, to a pre-storm condition. So trying to get them to line up has been a little bit of a challenge and I don't know if FEMA will accept that. So the next option would be to maybe try to get a whole separate construction bid just for the restoration and use that. That all takes time and work and people go through this process. And so because we were so close to. And so because we were so close to securing all of the funding for Riverside Park, that is the one case where we are considering, maybe we should just take that money. Just take that FEMA money, even though it's lower than what we think it should be, and then cobble that with the $500,000 Great Trails grant that we received and the passive rec funding that we're anticipating. And then we're almost over the finish line, if not over the finish line for Riverside Park.
Yeah.
And we can just move on. So that may be the best solution for Riverside, particularly given the complexity of what we're dealing with. Yes, sir.
Does that negotiation have any bearing on the Silverline Park plans? In other words, we'll give you here if you'll give us there?
No, that'll be, that'll be, like I said, that's a much more straightforward. This was damaged, we want to just fix what was already damaged. There is that little bit of mitigation on the stream bank, but that doesn't seem to be any deal breaker with, with them, so. Sorry, I know that's a lot of information, but it's good.
To have at least one guarantee as far as our parks are concerned.
Yep.
Because we need to give back to the public, they need to have a space that they can go to, that they can feel satisfied, safe and all of that. I mean, in my mind, I'm seeing three years as far as the other parks are concerned. So that timeline really concerns me because you have a two-year-old, now a five-year-old, and they're in school. So mom has missed three years' worth of being able to take their kid to the park. And so those, those are things that, that weigh on.
Well, we do expect to be having to post the construction, the invitation for bids for Silverline Park this fall. So I think we're getting pretty close to getting that park back on track. The, and Riverside Park, you know, that was always going to be part of a construction project that was going to take longer for a while anyway, but it would be nice to kind of have that worked out. We're also a little bit concerned about the timing of the passive recreation grant funding being restarted. Like, we're super excited because that is a big piece of our funding gap that we, that could help us close that funding gap. But the timing of trying to work out the costs with FEMA and needing to get information to Buncombe County about how, how much money exactly do we need to complete this project is a little tight. So we're going to see how our fun, how our meeting with FEMA goes this week when we use our construction bid information to kind of see how they respond to that. If it's positive, we may try to push on that a little bit. If it's not positive, we may just bail and kind of default to the moving forward with their cost estimate. So great questions. Anything else before I move on? Okay. So moving on to the long-term recovery planning, I'm not going to talk on this too long because it is actually later on your agenda, we'll cover it in more detail then. But Buncombe County is working on the draft Helene recovery plan. I just found out right before this meeting that they've just posted it, the announcement went out. So it is now posted on Buncombe County's website and it is available for public comment and review. So that includes council, that includes everybody in Woodfin, that includes everybody in the county can go and look at that plan and comment on any part of that plan. Now, I would encourage you not to focus on the typos or the misspellings or anything like that. And there are a number in that plan that's all being identified and being worked out. It is just a draft, but just really, I would recommend everybody concentrate on the content. We will be discussing the Woodfin specific section of that plan later on. The plan is for Buncombe County commissioners to adopt the full plan after all of that public comment is received and incorporated. I think it closes at the end of October, or sometime in October. And, and then, so the plan will get updated and then it goes to the Buncombe County Commissioners for full adoption in November. And then it would go to all of the municipalities in December for their adoption. So that all local governments in Buncombe County have the same adopted plan that we can all work from. Other work related to long-term recovery, we've continued to attend training and had other conversations and then investigated the CDBG DR and SURF DR. That's disaster relief specific funding to see if there's any way the town can tap into this funding to just help advance some of our priorities. Unfortunately, it does not seem like we are a good fit for either of these funding streams, primarily because either it's a mismatch in that it is directed at infrastructure that we don't control, or it requires that you have property or have a plan or have a project already sort of in the works to be able to capitalize. An example of that would be affordable housing. If you have land that you were waiting to, to build affordable housing on, you could potentially apply for CDBG DR to build housing. We're not in a position to do that. Nevertheless, we look at other sources of funding that we might be able to rely on to help advance some of our priorities. The, I reported previously that the Climate Smart Communities Initiative Grant was awarded to Woodfin and the community of Swananoa. We've had one meeting, we're having another meeting this month, and then there's a big meeting in October. So the, I just found out this week that the partners, all of the different partners for Climate Smart Communities are coming to Western North Carolina in October for a big, like, two-day meeting to travel the area, meet with officials and learn about how they can support our recovery efforts. So I think that's very encouraging and very promising. So stay tuned, more updates on that later. We're also awaiting the results of an EPA technical assistance grant application that we submitted a little while ago. I believe we should hear back this month. Preparing for this update reminded me that I hadn't heard from them. I reached out, I haven't gotten a response, but I hope to soon. That's it for recovery. Any questions before I move on to the rest of my update? Okay. So moving on, administration, reporting on contracts that have come in the last 30 days. We've had four, so contract activity is starting to pick up as we kind of roll into our new fiscal year. A small contract with Equinox Environmental for hazard mitigation. That is specifically for the mitigation of, for Silverline Park, the stream bank restoration and some of the other design work and permitting that they are doing for the town. A grant to ABCCM for $50,000, that's part of our community partner grant program that was awarded last month, last month. And that is specifically for emergency assistance or crisis assistance for our residents. Another community partner grant to New Bridge Baptist Church for $8,500 for food and non-food supplies for the Woodfin, to supplement the Woodfin Manor Community Market that they host every month. And then a, a contract for $22,922 to Axon for three dashboard cameras for our new police vehicles that will be added to our fleet soon. Other activities in the administration department include our 2025 audit. The auditors were onsite last week. They've completed their onsite work, they're now working remotely to complete the rest of the audit and we should get those results before long. Staff have also continued to work on the Text My Gov launch that is planned, we hope, this month. It would have been done by now, except that, and this is a good reason why it's not done, is that we recognized that the reporting function that we were very interested in with Text My Gov, that we were in a better position to take advantage of that than we had originally thought. So that's a little additional work on the back, on the front end in order to get the reporting function rolled out with the rest of the emergency communications. So as a reminder, what that reporting function is, is any resident or business owner or anybody in Woodfin who identifies something in the community that needs attention, a leaning tree, a broken swing, a pothole, a clogged culvert, anything like that, you can take a picture or just text the town through Text My Gov and it'll automatically create a work order that gets sent to our project managers. So every day, our public works staff can come in and they can review the list or zoning staff, whoever, and it'll be routed to the appropriate staff based on the category that people select. And they can just look at that and know, like, oh, I got to go check this today. And, and it'll also help us keep track of the different work that we perform in a year. So, so we're getting ready to launch that. Yes, sir.
Do you want to put that on the communications subcommittee agenda for October? Do we, do you need any help with that launch?
Text My Gov does it all. Yep, they've got it all set up, they'll handle a lot of the marketing. I mean, we'll post stuff on our websites and have other materials, but they, they take care of all of that for us. Thank you.
Will there be a category for like, I know you're saying trees and potholes and whatnot, but can someone say, someone's dumped a couch on the side of Riverside Drive, so there'll be?
Yep, there'll, there'll be trash, garbage, roadside. There, there's a bunch of different keywords that, and that's part of the work on the front end that we have to do is we have to identify all of the kind of words people would use to describe a situation and then be able to kind of categorize, categorize it all, so we know that it gets routed. And it, you know, won't be perfect. There might be an instance where something goes to Public Works that actually should go to police or go to zoning or something.
Other.
Yeah, and there's always another category.
Is that one as well?
Depends.
I'm trying to remember.
If the graffiti is really good.
I think so, yes. If it isn't, we can certainly add it. And there is a, there is a very interesting, it's, it's, it's so interesting how this technology works. When we get messages or keywords that, or, you know, people are filing complaints or concerns that we don't have categorized, it'll track it. And it'll let us know, like, hey, you've gotten six text messages about graffiti. You should consider adding a category for graffiti, you know? So, so yeah, it learns and it, it helps us kind of refine how we organize the structure.
I'm sorry, I just keep, go back to the painting of the woman.
Oh, yeah, yes, we would have gotten a lot of text messages, I'm sure about that. So, yeah. That's, that's an excellent example. Records management. So our wonderful clerk has been devoting significant time to organizing all of our ordinances and resolutions. Those are all available on the town's website now. And there's a search function so you can use a keyword, an address, a date, and hopefully find what you're looking for. So any member of the public can search our inventory of ordinances and resolutions.
That's awesome.
We are also working on codif, not codifying is not the right word, recording or doing the proper records management for all of our minutes. These are records that we are obligated to maintain in perpetuity. That's why our books are contained in a sealed fireproof vault. But we also have a requirement to microfiche these as a backup for redundancy. We have not done any microfiche scanning in 25 years. So we have a lot of work to do, so Gina's.
You have to use that technology?
You do, yes, you have to use microfiche.
Do the devices still exist?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Think of a picture world where we no longer have computers, but we're going to get the fucking, you know, the torch behind the microfiche and project it on the wall.
I didn't know that even existed.
Yeah. Now, we, we are also just scanning it and saving another copy just to have, it's, it'll be more accessible, easier to, to find and use. And it's just another level of redundancy. So, so kudos there, that work is ongoing. I mentioned earlier, we're approaching the one-year anniversary of Helene. So we have our bi-annual newsletter getting ready to go out. It would normally be our summer newsletter, but we thought this should, the focus of this newsletter is Helene. So where we were a year ago, we were literally, our newsletter had been printed and was sitting at the printer, ready to go in the mail when the storm came. We made the decision not to send that because the content just didn't seem relevant or appropriate given the disaster we had all just experienced. So we're reflecting back a little bit about where we were a year ago, some of the news that we were trying to share at the time. We're also have a section that's devoted to where we are now, today, in our recovery process, and then another section where we're looking to go in the next several years. So that we expect to arrive in people's mailboxes in October, hopefully by mid-October, if not sooner. So that work is moving along. And then, of course, we're planning our Helene anniversary gathering. It's really a, a thank you to staff and volunteers for all of the support and assistance we received during that time period, but also just a commemoration to kind of reflect on the year and just spend some time together, really. And that is.
RSDP's gone up?
Yes, yes, we have a good showing now. And also, anybody's invited, anybody who would like to come, please feel free to come. That is this Thursday, September 18th, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM at Roy Pope, at the pavilion next to Town Hall. Moving on to planning and stormwater, the planning department is focused on our code update and we are working with the consultants to wrap up task one. We do seem to be a little bit behind schedule and we did point this out to the consultants. This is not a, the bottleneck's not on our end, it's really on the consultant's side. There had some family emergencies and things that have taken them out of, out of work for a little while. But I think we can make up some of that time. And at the end of the day, if we're two months behind, it's not going to be the end of the world. But we want to try to get back on track and make sure we stay on track now. We're also looking at a department reorg, which, reorganization really probably isn't the best term. It's really just sort of a shuffle of responsibilities. What we recognized is that there are certain areas within the planning department that could probably use more support. And if we just sort of shift the roles and responsibilities of the different various staff, that, that could also not only offer more support, but also potentially free up staff to advance certain more strategic projects. So it's a way for us to kind of capitalize on skills, interests, abilities to kind of offer more support and advance work. So we're excited about that. We're going to try it out for about six months and see, and then, you know, check in periodically and see how it's going. For the stormwater division, their focus is primarily on closing out the stormwater permits. Just as a reminder, the town took over the legacy permits from Buncombe County some time ago. So there's a lot of work, a lot of those permits did not get closed out in the manner that they should have been. And so there's been a lot of work to try to fix all of that in addition to staying on top of the permits that are new and coming in. That also comes with a responsibility to do annual inspections. And we're learning that a lot of those property owners never receive notification of these annual inspections. And so that's a big hurdle that we're having to kind of tackle now is getting those folks aware and focused on making sure, maintaining their stormwater infrastructure so that it will pass inspection, so that the whole system operates as it should. So that work is happening right now and taking up a good amount of time. Our stormwater administrator, Nate Oblon, also spent some time putting together a really nice informational letter that was sent to all property owners who have a stream, a creek, a water body of some kind on their property, just reminding them of what it means to be a responsible steward of that and, and keeping not just debris out of the waterways, but, you know, various pollutants and vegetate and keeping the water as clean as possible and just asking for their assistance and paying attention and doing that. So those also went out. And then for both planning and stormwater staff, we've now assumed flood permit review and tracking. So we always had, well, for a while, we'd been discussing with Buncombe County that we wouldn't do just stormwater. We would also take over flood. Council adopted the flood ordinance several months ago, so that was in preparation of us making this transition. So just like with stormwater, we're also taking over those old flood permits that never got closed out. So there's, there's a good bit of work, including the Helene flood permits. So, so there's been quite a bit of coordination with Buncombe County, particularly for some of those more complex Helene-related permits, just trying to make sure we understand what was the rationale and, you know, making sure that we're consistent. And then also to get the proper and necessary training for our staff. So ideally, our staff who review these permits will eventually become certified flunk plane managers, but there's a certain series of trainings that have to occur and a test that has to be passed before that can happen. We can still review flood permits without that training, so that's not a problem. Particularly as we work with Buncombe County, we've got support there, but eventually we will get those certifications. Moving on to public works and facilities, I'm happy to report that some of the repairs to the Roy Pope Playground or Avery's Little Corner have been completed. So the stairs have been replaced and the tire swing has been replaced. We have, the, the benches, all of this equipment was obsolete. So that's the biggest reason for the delay is finding, particularly the stairs, you know, trying to find something that will work in that context. And that would, could be retrofitted to the system that we have. With, the benches also are obsolete, so we were trying to source something that was similar. We found something, we've ordered it. We're not sure when it's going to arrive, but as soon as they arrive, we'll get them installed.
Think about the fencing along there that's broken.
Oh, that's been broken for a long time. The, right behind us?
The, um.
The picket fence.
Oh, not the picket fence, the, where the tree fell or whatever.
Oh, the wood fence.
Not the wood. Not the wood fence. No, the chain link.
Oh. I didn't even notice that. I mean, we've, we've got fence behind us that, it's different trees that have fallen over the years, have kind of crushed it. So we can take a look at it and see if we want to restore it. I think we've been holding off on repairs like fence replacement, thinking that we're gonna do a town hall redevelopment, and if that happens, we wouldn't want to spend money on something like a fence only to remove it two years later. So how important is the fence? Do we need it, you know? So we'll take a look at it and we'll see. And on that subject too, council, it looks like September 30th is the best date for the council work session, so we'll be, we'll be able to have an opportunity to discuss that in more detail.
Did you have any luck seeing if ADL would make the canopy over?
I've, I forgot to ask Adrian about that, and she's not here right now. I'll have to check in with her. I'll, I'll report back. And then really good news, the last payment on the Taylor Street property was made this month, so we now own that property free and clear.
Alone?
Yeah, or alone, yeah. And so we were paying that back, so that's done. And to celebrate, we're gonna pave the entryway into the property. So that, hopefully, we've signed that contract, so we're just waiting to schedule that work, and hopefully that will be done soon. We're also continuing to look at some modest facility improvements. This is really part of our internal staff strategic plan about just creating a comfortable work environment for our employees. So the upper right-hand corner is the police interview room. We've replaced the carpeting. If that isn't obvious, I'm trying to highlight the carpeting in this. We have some pretty old carpeting in the building, particularly in the offices. These are carpet squares, they did it themselves. We were all kind of curious, like, how challenging would it be? It wasn't the easiest installation, but not the worst either. So we may be doing this in some of our other offices too, just to slowly try to improve the work conditions and the work environment. We're also looking at getting some quotes for updates and refreshes for the Taylor Street Public Works Facility Building, for the bathroom is our highest priority, and then maybe the kitchen. We're not really sure what that is yet. We're meeting with a contractor, I think in about a week, to just try to get some ideas and, and see. But even though our Public Works staff don't spend a lot of time in this building, when they are in it, it's, these are important facilities, so we want it to be nice. So we're looking at that. Moving on to the Police Department. So the big news in the Police Department is all of the work in our evidence room. So you see that photo is, as, as our evidence custodian has continued her work with using pad tracks to document and inventory everything properly, also realized that we have a fair amount of evidence that doesn't need to be held on to. And there is a very specific prescribed process that you go through to dispose of that evidence, and so she is working with our command staff on getting all of that done. And what you see is not all of the evidence, but it's a good chunk of it for 159 cases that are no longer needed and will be disposed of. So that, that just removes all of that clutter.
Humor me, what would be in one of those bags, for example?
Like a backpack, or drug paraphernalia, like a, like a bong, or, you know, clothing.
We can't sell it or give it away?
No.
No.
Just asking.
You walk along with the garden gnomes.
I don't think there's any value to 99% of that stuff. So, yeah. So that'll all get, you know, that, removing all of that clutter just makes it that much easier for us to stay on top of the evidence that we do need to maintain. So that's good progress.
Manageable.
We are also, I mentioned earlier, adding three new vehicles to our fleet, hopefully in October, and we're adding dashboard cameras. So that is the first of these cameras that we are adding. And it's like the body cameras, only it's, it's not mounted on the dashboard. I think it's mounted on the ceiling and it sits over the dashboard. And it will film, when the lights go on, it automatically turns on, just like with the body camera footage, you just, you can tap, tap it and it comes on. So it's just another tool, a very valuable tool, that we will start to implement in all of our vehicles. So it is expensive. This is expensive equipment, and there is an ongoing maintenance cost associated with them as well, but we think it's worth it. It's really important, so.
Is it the kind of technology, and Chief, you made an answer it, where if you've got a car on a call, can you go on a screen and see what, see what they're dealing with, with that camera? It's not that kind of thing?
No, I think it's just record it, and then we can go and look at it later, just like body camera.
I've been watching too much sex.
Yeah. So.
We can get screens.
Well, Mariska Hardt, Hardt, if they has it, I mean, if she has it, you need it.
And then finally, our Police Department continue their good community outreach work. This is a photo of Officer Jennifer Laird, who's one of our newest officers, speaking at a meeting, a recent meeting of the Woodfin Business Association. So as wonderful as it is to get updates from the chief, or, or, you know, I've spoken at Wood, at WBA before, it's really important for folks like Jen to be able to meet these folks and for them to meet her, so that they recognize each other and know each other, and they can start to form a relationship. Because Jen is the boots on the ground, she is the officer who is out in the community 12 hours a day, every day. So really valuable, and also it gives them experience of getting in front of groups and meeting with them. And, and so this was, I thought this was a really exciting moment, and so I had to jump up and take a photo. So, anyway. That concludes my update this month. I'm sorry, I know that's longer than normal, but.
Good stuff.
Thank you.
Questions from council, everybody good? And you didn't, the SRO has started at the school, school has started?
Yep.
So looking forward to, you guys could present at the next advisory council and learn really what an SRO does, more than just being a police officer.
Yep.
So we're grateful for that. All right.
All right.
I don't see.
So I do not know why Ms. Olson isn't here. We had previously arranged for her to be here to do this update, so I would say let's just skip over it, and we will hopefully get her lined up for council maybe next time.
She manages Crisis Center, she might have a crisis.
She might have a crisis, we never know.
All right, then let's move on to new business, are we ready?
Yep.
First item is a public hearing, consideration of ordinance number 2025-18, which is a request to rezone .47 acres located on Goodman Road to rezone it from Mountain Village to R10. Mr. Ricky Hurley, take that away.
Thank you for the introduction.
I'm sorry, can I, I apologize, I just thought of the clarification from staff that we have dashboard cameras in all of our vehicles.
We're replacing.
We're replacing. I apologize, I just said it's a budget of it, we do an enforcement, buy an enforcement vehicle, we put this in all of our vehicles. Thank you. I hope we're just starting with those three.
Okay. Just three new ones.
All right.
So thank you for the introduction there. I was looking, saying too, I called the applicant, and I'm not seeing anybody here for that. Hopefully, they've not delayed in traffic, but, yeah, well, we don't know, it rained today, it's panic. As you introduced, this is a very small parcel. So we do a black and white map, that's what we have to kind of record for the official zoning map. The hatched area is the parcel that we're talking about. I'm gonna show you a color one that's easier. So as we're all familiar, Mountain Village is that gold color to the right, the light blue, periwinkle to the left is R10, and immediately to the south is Heavy Industrial. That is MSD's large main tract of property. And just off the screen, as a way of reference, to the north is the Altura Development. So that's why there's Mountain Village in here. The future land use map identifies this area as Residential 1, which is kind of our existing in-town neighborhoods, the smaller lots, and there are roads. And there's a description for you, single-family duplex manufactured homes. And what we heard from the applicant, that's the reason for the request, is that they have a home that's a HUD version, and so that's not allowed in Mountain Village, but R10 does allow for individual double wides on lots. And they want to place a single one there. We can't consider that use as part of the rezoning request, but that's what they kind of verbalized to us. As far as the aerial goes, as you see, it's wooded to the south. On the left-hand side, I don't know if you see it, do you see almost like a upside down, I guess C or W there? Duke Power has a significant cross-country power line right in here, so the western half of this property is kind of affected by a power line easement, so that kind of inhibits developing it. And there's actually another easement in this area that's on the survey. As you can see, it's mostly scattered homes, there's actually a couple double wides in the area, I think that's one across the street from this, right here in the center. And they provided this, this is the lot we're talking about. As you see, significant lines crossing the western half. And with R10, you actually get setbacks applied versus Mountain Village, we have none. So that'll probably be more congruent. Again, power lines, this is our subject lot, nice and level, not common in this town.
Any neighbors object to this?
Never heard anything. Posted sign, we've done mail notices for Planning Board and this meeting advertised, and this is, you know, this is probably both lots, which you can kind of see, it's fairly level, it's shallow, but it's fairly level. And then, of course, rezoning would more match the existing development pattern of Goodman Road, which is kind of detached, single-family. There's not any sewer up there either, so having townhomes or multifamily in this area is probably not appropriate. And like I mentioned, Mountain Village is more suitable for five-acre parcels, and then would reduce the allowable density in neighborhood because it has limited access to sewer. So I think it's a better fit. And the Planning Board Adjustment did review this back in August 12th, and they approved it five to zero. And then we're recommending that in concurrent with Planning Board of Adjustment on that to R10. And I'll stop talking here. So do you have any questions for staff, or would like to go ahead and open up for public hearing?
Questions from council members? All right, then we will open the public hearing at 6:12 p.m. It is now open. No one signed up for it. The fact that residents on Goodman Road are really involved, so if anybody would have had an objection, you would have heard from them. They're really solid, really awesome neighborhood, they, they do things together, they look out for each other, and so this is good. So anyone that wants to speak in the public hearing, if not, we will close it at 6:13. If there's no other questions from council, would you put up a proposed motion for us?
Yeah.
Thank you. A council member would like to take this one?
I'll do it.
Okay.
Move to approve the rezoning of .47 acres from Mountain Village District to R10 Residential District, as shown on Exhibits A and B. And find that the request is reasonable, is in the public interest, is consistent with the Town of Woodfin Comprehensive Plan, and meets the development needs of the community in that the request uses the future land use map to guide development decisions, promotes fiscal responsibility, been encouraging growth in areas with existing services over other areas, and makes government decision-making accessible and transparent to all residents.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All in favor, please say yes.
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 I hear four yeses. Thank you very much, Ricky, great job as usual.
Thank you.
All right, the Helene, Mr. Mayor's, yes, Jan's coming up, we need this flag for reminder, this rezoning reminded me that the downzoning issue that we've talked about in the past was for legislative purposes, if you're rubbing elbows with General Assembly members because they're not in Raleigh deciding, you know, raising the budget. It did not get addressed the way we thought it might, this General Assembly get fixed. We still have the issue with downzoning, it's sort of difficult at best, especially we are the ones who initiated, so we looked at that map and said, oh, we can harmonize this by initiating it, what might be a downzoning. That's, that's not been addressed. So all this time when, you know, the General Assembly is not in, those, those things are not, not be able to happen.
But in this case, it was applicant, it was owner-initiated, so it's.
That's why, that's why it didn't affect this one, I didn't bring it up during the discussion, but just, it reminded me, we thought that might get addressed, it didn't happen.
Thank you.
Still out there. Thank you, John.
Thank you. So as I mentioned earlier, in my Town Manager update, we are working with Buncombe County on a Woodfin-specific section of the Helene Recovery Plan. So when we talk about a recovery plan, really what the purpose of this kind of planning effort is, is to go, go beyond our immediate response and restore communities by rebuilding infrastructure, reviving the economy, and revitalizing social systems in a way that also enhances resilience to future events. So it's moving beyond just a response and that initial recovery period, restoring a park, it's actually looking at how can we make our community stronger and more resilient to future hurricanes or wildfires, or whatever the potential disaster is, economic or natural. So, so you, you focus on what do you want your community to look like, what areas do we want to concentrate our work and efforts in, what are our highest priorities? And as it relates to Hurricane Helene, there, we all experienced the same event, but we experienced that event in different ways, and our communities are different, we're all unique, and while some aspects of recovery may be similar or the same, other aspects are different. And so this is a countywide plan that was initiated by municipal and county leaders earlier on in the recovery process. We all recognized that this was a regional natural disaster, and we needed a regional plan that responded to it. Fortunately, FEMA supplies funding for recovery plans, and the county stepped up to the plate and secured that funding, and also offered some additional staff support for project management to kind of get this plan rolling. So our staff met with FEMA representatives to discuss, how do you identify projects? What should it look like? And so they walked us through a process, a facilitated process, of identifying the different recovery projects. We identified 17 different projects, and here are the 17. I'm not gonna read them, but in the plan, there is a page that is dedicated to each of these projects. And again, you will see some of these appear in other municipalities or in the county's list of priority projects, because we do have some commonality, but then some probably won't. And how we prioritize those different projects will vary from community to community. But on each of those pages, you will find a purpose, which is basically a project description, a list of benefited, benefits and intended outcomes, so what do we hope to achieve with this project, activities and deliverables, so what kind of actions do we need to take in order to achieve those benefits and outcomes, and then other implementation considerations. We also have some graphics that help identify the complexity, the cost, and the timing of the projects, as well as a list of project sponsors, project lead, and, and other community partners that might participate in that project. So here's what a sample page will look like. This is the first of our projects that are listed, Emergency Communications Plan. So you'll see that purpose statement, the benefits and intended outcomes, activities and deliverables, and the implementation considerations. That's the content. At the top, you'll see a little graphic that helps identify the complexity, the cost, and the timing. Are we talking about, is this a complex project, is it a costly project, and is this a short, medium, or long-term project? Because they all have different timeframes. And then at the bottom, you'll see the project sponsor, project lead, and other partners. So.
Are these ranked in order?
No, no.
Okay.
Not ranked in order, just, just, it was the order that they were organized on the spreadsheet.
Okay.
You'll also find on each page photos, quotes, other little graphics that help provide some additional data or context to that particular project. So again, we are tonight just looking at the 17 pages that are, is the Woodfin section, so each municipality has a section or a chapter, and ours happens to be 17 pages long. And there's an introduction page too, that I didn't include, but that just has some general stats, and the same for each of the other communities. And then this all gets incorporated into the larger Buncombe County plan that I announced earlier is now posted, and, and where anybody, any member of our community can comment. So what we're asking for, what our recommendation is, is that the council approve these 17 pages, or the, the content of it. Again, these will be refined, it's just we want your support for moving these to Buncombe County, saying, our council is good with this, these 17 projects, and all of the associated information, so that they can incorporate it into their plan, and as they receive public comment, if there are sections in our chapter that we want to consider updating, then we will certainly have that opportunity to discuss that with them and get that updated appropriately. Once all of that, that public input session is closed. Once all of that, that public input session is closed and the updates are made, then the plan is for this full plan to go to the county commissioners in November. And then after it's approved by the county commissioners, to get it on the agendas in all of the six municipalities for adoption in December. So we all have the same adopted plan, and we're all working from the same.
This is absolutely outstanding. The work is first class. Thank you. This, I've been through it in a fair amount of detail, I think the Vice Mayor has as well. I have a concern. You've got 19 initiatives. Need some plan for prioritization and, or can any of these be combined? Have y'all already been through that exercise?
No, and, and there's a lot of work that can still happen on this. And prioritization, I think each municipality, I just in checking in with my colleagues, the other town managers, I think everybody's sort of looking to their retreats, their winter retreats, to look at the plan and discuss any kind of priorities. Our Climate Smart Communities Initiative and the EPA Technical Assistance, if those are approved, we may be able to advance a couple of these projects sooner rather than later.
Do you have any chairs in progress? And, and any kind of order?
I mean, the staff have highlighted a couple that we know are high priorities for the community, like the flash flooding on Weaverville Road. I mean, that's a public safety issue as well as, you know, just a resiliency issue.
My concern is if you're trying to tackle 19 and you're.
There's no way. Yeah, we can't do 19. So I think some, some prioritization, I think, will be beneficial to staff. There's also just opportunity. We may just come across an opportunity where there's a resource or a grant or something that's available that might help us with one of those projects, even if it isn't a high priority. We may want to capitalize on that opportunity. But having a priority is helpful, but I think that's work that we can do on our own that doesn't need to be part of this plan.
Question I have, if you don't mind, is, you know, the county's opening it up. People in Woodfin may or may not see that notice. Is it appropriate for us to promote this to people in the town of Woodfin? Maybe have the, have this available on our website, which it may already be, and tell people on social media, should we ask the people of Woodfin to? Like, we can put the spreadsheet really big on a wall. The question for council is, do we need to, we need to, for the next month, invite people in to look at this and talk to us?
So the, the county has the plan posted, asking for public input. So I think I would encourage everybody to use the process that's in place and go to the county. And, and, and we will have links. We will have links on our website and in our social media. We will say, the plan is available for public comment, including the Woodfin section. Please go.
Buncombe County.org, it's easy to find this.
I, I just got the announcement right before this meeting, so I haven't gone onto the website yet, but I expect it would be, yes.
So is it sectioned out by the material? Because if it's one page, if 170 pages, I don't want them to be 170 pages. People have to.
There's a table of contents, so you can jump to the section that you're interested in.
Everybody, if you can't, if you don't have the means to print it, I'm sure Gina will print this for you in color if you request. It's really good to go by page by page. The format is outstanding.
Yeah, it is.
So the question I have for council is, do we want to, do we want to get fired up and do some kind of a, get the public, at least give them the opportunity to study this, come in and talk to one or two of us at a time about it, or is that strict? Is that overboard?
Let me ask you, so do they have a public comment page where they fill out? So that handles that. We just need to advertise.
We just need to push it out.
Did that come from us, though?
And that's our plan. Well, it'll go to them, but they'll share it with us. So anything that's Woodfin specific, though. Yeah, and any, and any potential edits or suggestions or anything like that that are to the Woodfin pages, they will review with us.
True.
It's on the, yeah, the main page of their website. If you go to buncombe county.org, it's right there. Envision Buncombe. There's a link.
Yeah, and we'll push the link out.
Woodfin, they clicked up, do they have it?
No, no, it just takes you to the whole plan, but our social media will.
See how difficult it is to get to the Woodfin page, Sharon? Thank you. I mean, that's the question I think we have.
Well, I also don't want to assume that residents of Woodfin would not be interested in the rest of the content of the plan. You know, like, I think anybody, any who lives anywhere in this county can comment on the whole plan as well as a section that they may be more specifically interested in. There's nothing to stop somebody in Woodfin commenting on a plant or a project in Weaverville. You know, there, that's all.
What did I learn in post-Helene? Every time you or me, we were on the radio waves, we got people, thank you, thank you. Thank you for talking to us. Thank you for letting us ask questions. You know, we haven't done a town hall in forever. My concern is, are we, are we communicating with our residents enough?
Well, this is the recommended process for, for it. And this is, you know, Buncombe County is leading this. We've been participating, and this is what they're asking. They're asking us to support this process by pushing it out on our social media. That's why we got the update earlier, was like, please help us spread the word. So we will be doing that.
Now, can you go to the tab for the, the plan? There's tabs across the page for each municipality.
Okay.
So you would tab it, we're done, you should have it.
Okay.
But you tab over to Woodfin's tab, that takes you directly to our page.
Is there a search box that you can type in?
That's what I was trying to find.
Because the reason why we're asking is, yeah, all of us are computer literate, but the harder you make it, the less accessible it is for those who don't use computers all the time, but may be interested in seeing and commenting.
It's down across the top.
I want the people in this town to know that we're on, we're on top of this. We're not shopping this to the county.
Actually, it's the word Woodfin.
Yeah, Shannon's, Shannon's going to bring it up here for you. It, it's, it's easy to find. It really is.
Yeah, she's saying she's not, Betsy's not finding it.
Yeah.
She searches it.
I think just go to their website.
Which website?
Just go to Buncombe.
Buncombe County.org.
Yeah, just go back there. Just go to the main website, the official webpage. Just go down, just right here.
Go to the search for Envision.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So go, just scroll down.
So it's up to us to advertise that, but what I'm most interested in is the ease of management. Is any of those.
Sorry, sorry, I'm taking over. Right here, just click on that.
Here, here it is. So right on the front page of the Buncombe County website, go to Envision Buncombe.
And then scroll down a little bit more, sorry.
She said, buddy, where she went, a blue link.
That blue link right here. This blue link right there. Yep, there we go. And then, yeah, I did lose this touchscreen. And then there's the towns.
Okay, can you highlight that? Now, can we link?
Yes, yes.
We can link that to our page.
Yeah, we can do that.
If you can give a shorter URL to that, okay.
Okay, now, will you go downward? I'm sorry that I don't have my computer. It's been away. And are these headings that can be?
These are our, so this is how they've set up their public input session. So here are our projects.
Can you click on them and open them up?
No, doesn't look like it. So they're asking specific questions. Respond to the following statement. The town of Woodfin projects above are in line with what's important to me.
How do they get to this?
Do you have any other feedback?
How do they get to this?
Well, that's, that's the actual plan.
Something just all just got put up.
I understand, I understand.
Yeah, if you could give them feedback, and this is not meant to be, to criticize, but most of us, all of us have had an issue with the, the Woodfin being its own acknowledged municipality and that we are centering our, our support to, to, to Woodfin citizens and trying to help them. Of course, we're concerned about the entire county, but our primary concern is whether or not Woodfin citizens know how to do things. And since this is not easily navigable, I, I think it's incumbent upon us to try to figure out a way to tease it out so that Woodfin citizens know that they can go look for their own specific information and not have to do a gigantic search.
We can do the, the 17 pages, just like I saved a PDF for council and your packets. We can post that on our website and ask people, like, they can, they can, we can, on our social media posts, we can say, you can comment here or you can comment here.
But can you?
Give them more than one option.
An easy link to get to this.
Yeah.
It's on our agenda page.
Okay.
Yeah.
And in social media, give a link to that too, because our Facebook has hundreds and hundreds of followers.
Yeah.
And then if you wish to comment on this, see this page, which is the one that you brought up the first time.
Yep.
Do we have any input to those questions they're asking, the kinds of questions?
No, I mean, that, this is just the process we all sort of signed on to. So, yeah.
All right, council, let's go down the road. What do you think?
Well, I, I think that I'm satisfied with the links. As long as they're, you know, user-friendly.
Easy, because I haven't gotten to it yet.
Yeah, so Betsy can't find it. She really does help.
I've gotten the plan.
What if it's not?
So can we?
I can see the plan.
Well, if it's not, then.
I'll show you, I'll show you when we're done. I, I mean, I think every plan. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Hey, let's just see.
If it's not, then we need to figure out how to make it so. Because it's not going to be helpful if people can't access it.
Ken Con.
Assuming that it's going to be easily accessible, and I trust that that's going to happen, I think that's going to be adequate, but certainly allow for input on both, on social and from the website, if there's a way to do that.
We can do that.
My Vice Mayor.
I had some questions about some of the things on here, so this is not the appropriate time for those, right?
No, I mean, I think you can share those questions with us, or you can just comment on the website.
Okay, because I had some questions, like, what about restoring free Wi-Fi in Roy Pope Park? I didn't find that kind of thing. I knew Wi-Fi had gone away there.
Yeah.
And it has not come back. And also, like, would this include emergency internet access for the town? You know, during a disaster.
Exactly the kind of thing that we'd be looking for.
These are the kind of things that, that I was, I've gone through the whole thing pretty carefully.
How would, how would deserve and get those comments back so that y'all, y'all would be able to see them? How would that process?
So based on this discussion, we would provide links to both the county site, where you could input your comments directly, or you could link to, or file a comment with the town of Woodfin, in which case we would collect those comments and share them with Buncombe County at some appropriate time.
I mean, I've said mine, and I agree with Betsy. I think some things need to be teased out that are a priority for our citizens. So, yeah, if we could, if we could follow up on that and then follow up on the links to make sure that it's easily accessible.
While they're doing that, I think most importantly, every one of us needs to sit down with the phone off and study this document and get comments back to Shannon, to the staff, before the people start diving into it, maybe.
And please keep in mind, this is not an exhaustive list.
Right.
This is just a guide to help structure how we spend our time in future years and to let subsequent councils and subsequent staff know what some of our priorities and our thoughts were based on this disaster. So it does not mean we still can't pursue wireless at Roy Pope Park or anything like that. It doesn't mean that we can't take those activities and action steps or the deliverables and benefits and enhance that or edit it for our own purposes. We, we are not married to this. This is just a guide.
And there is no urgency to do this tonight.
There is.
The county doesn't need it until November.
Well, it's already posted. So what we want is for people to make comment, make that public comment so that it can be shared with the county so that it goes into the system.
If this council is familiar enough with these 17 projects to vote to approve them, more power to you.
No, you're not approving the full plan. You're just approving that.
17 Woodfin projects. Why do we have to rush?
So, yeah, my concern is, I understand this is a, like, a comprehensive project for, for the county. The risk that I see, and it may not be real, but it just comes to mind that when we are looking at a comprehensive project that looks at the county, we lose some of the ability, we lose our voice, like, that we are not able to prioritize our issues within our own community, and we're just deferring to the county. I mean, what's the risk of that? My issue before was that we defer too much to the county. I love the county, the county supports us, but we need to be able to support ourselves. So in supporting this, how much of that protection is taken away?
We don't, we don't have enough information to, to answer that question tonight. We just got this.
So the county did not generate these 17 projects.
Why don't we address this to the October? Or do you want to have a work session on this?
I was, that's what I was suggesting, is a work session.
So the.
But Shannon is saying that.
I couldn't vote for this because I don't know enough.
So the recommendation, we are following the process that the FEMA professionals and the county staff have done for long-term recovery plans. So the county didn't generate the 17 projects. Staff generated the 17 projects and, and all of the content that goes with them. And that is based on input that we've received from people that we've worked with on this recovery process to date. So it's not in a vacuum that this has been done.
We're not saying that. We're just saying we need some time.
What I'm saying, though, is that.
Let us help you.
This is the process, right? So the, the process that was agreed to was that the county would post this, the full plan with our 17 pages, and that everybody, including Woodfin residents, would comment. It's the same thing that we did with the initial survey that went out for Envision Buncombe. That's how this whole thing got started, was with that initial survey.
We're not proposing anything alternate to that, other than taking a little time for council members. Like I said, if these four fine people feel like they know enough to vote on this motion, I'm ready for the motion, but if not, let's do something different.
The, the motion isn't really, like, the adoption of the plan doesn't come until December. That includes the whole plan in addition to the 17 pages for Woodfin. This motion isn't really necessary. It was really just to try to help communicate that what we're trying to do is just advance this, and then the next step would be to enter into this public input phase through the county's website and then through our.
It feels like, it feels like, what, I think there, I feel like there's a little confusion around what this is intended to accomplish. We're not approving the plan in any kind of final sense. We're simply saying, we want this included in the discussion. We want it included in the input session or whatever provision is being made by the county.
Yes.
To get input.
Right.
So I feel like we are, and I, I'm really sympathetic to not having Woodfin get rolled in to Buncombe's stuff when we need to take care of our own. But I don't think we're at that stage yet, and I don't think that's what this vote is for.
Right. It's really just to sort of acknowledge where we are in the process and to get support to continue with this collective process that everybody agreed to.
Okay, further comment from council?
So, but the way it's wired is, it makes it seem like that we are. And I would prefer that that not, not, not be the case.
You don't even need to make a motion. It's not necessary. It's just, it's hard to have a new business discussion without there being.
At the next meeting, that motion's probably downright appropriate after we and friends and neighbors have had time to talk about this. Am I wrong? Am I wrong?
No, we're all saying the same thing.
So I think the question is, what is the effect of that? So you would offer input. That would be used to influence that plan. That's going to happen anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, but.
And, and we're not, we're not signing off on this as it stands. We're saying we want to be a part of the process.
Okay, that's what it's.
Well, then you need a different motion.
That's what I was saying.
You actually don't even need a motion. I wouldn't even worry about it.
Shannon's already doing this project. What if, what if one of you goes through this in detail and wakes up and has an epiphany? Number 13, it can be combined with number seven easily. Let's do that.
And we're going to have plenty of time to put that in, to have that input into that process, regardless of this.
You can have your own plan. The town council in Woodfin can come up with their own Helene recovery plan. This, this is just what we agreed to do.
Wonderful, wonderful plan. We're all agreeing to that.
We just want to ensure that Woodfin doesn't lose its voice, and that's my primary concern. When you have these big projects, the bigger people tend to take over, and that's my concern.
Okay, is there, Shannon is saying we do not need a motion. So why don't we all agree, maybe, to promote this in our networks? Tell our friends and neighbors to go to the Woodfin webpage, find this link, read this plan, and if anybody asks them to comment, 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 what do you think?
Yeah, as long as it gives others the. Yeah, as long as it gives others the ability to express their desires, and not be coached, the bigger group.
And as Hazel said, we're all saying the same thing, this is awesome.
Yeah, it is.
We're just, we don't want to get lost, and the people in this town feel like we get lost in the county, in Nashville, and they want to be moved.
And you can get lost in the magnitude of this, too.
You can, but this is, this is excellent stuff, thank you. This conversation didn't turn out the way maybe it should have. Everybody okay with that strategy?
Yes.
All right. Is there any other new business?
No, that's it.
Mr. Hining, do we have a need to go into executive session tonight?
Yeah.
Is there anybody on council that has something pressing that they want to say or ask? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor of adjournment, say yes.
Yes.